All right, it's 6:00 p.m. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, may I have a roll call and an establishment of the forum? Isaiah Crowe?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
Arbustat?
Here.
Mike Wagner?
Here.
Matt Crowe?
Here.
Dylan Gollstein?
Here.
And I'm here as well. All right, I approve your posting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So, who?
Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. No public input tonight.
I believe that's from Jen.
Yeah, you're the closest now, sorry. So we don't forget. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Request one. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 15th, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education retreat minutes of August 5th, 2024?
So, who?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Request point five. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll, rules, and disbursements?
So, who? Second.
And any question on any of those? I like the updated format. Again, yeah, easy to look at in terms of, thanks Derek. Okay, hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education retreat minutes of August 5th, 2024?
So, who?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education retreat minutes of August 5th, 2024? So, who? Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education retreat minutes of August 5th, 2024?
So, who?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll, rules, and disbursements?
So, who? Second.
And any question on any of those? I like the updated format. Again, yeah, easy to look at in terms of, thanks Derek. Okay, hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024?
So, who? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024? So, who? Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. A lot of meetings, that's great. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July 22nd, 2024? So, who? Second. Any other questions?
No, I love the format.
Yeah, we have that.
It's very important.
And then once the school improvement plan, that will also be attached on top. So you guys can keep that and use that as your poster. Perfect. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, Melissa.
Love it.
All right, there you go.
Good evening. All right, I'm kind of the same format. A shout out to Sarah for the great format. Yeah. Also, some celebrations, a great job. Our FFA was at the state fair on the second, and I got to go see them. And it was so much fun to get to talk to the kids and give some food recommendations back in Florida. That is the best part of the fair. So, we all had corn dripping from our chins. It was lovely. But great job to them and a shout out to Ms. Hauser for all her work with them. She really goes above and beyond and got not only a great experience for them, but they also earned some money in working in there. And it was great to see how, when they were interacting with other people, how little other people around the state know about agriculture. Like, they see the second nature and there were adults who were asking them and they're like, I can't believe they don't know. It was great for our students, so wonderful. Huge thank you to Hillary Ackert too, who has left now, but just all of her hard work towards our school community, the athletic programming, and just all of her help to me in the whole transition period was wonderful, so public shout out to her. All right, then athletics.
It's going on, right?
Football practice starts tomorrow. So, on the first, we had a sports physical clinic, which I think is an amazing thing that this community offers that not all do. That really provides an opportunity for families who either the summer gets away from you and you can't schedule one, or it can be cost prohibitive too, because sports physicals aren't always covered on insurance. So, I think it's really great that we do that. We sold out this year. So, it went from nine to one. It may be something we want to look at expanding to all day next year, just because if it's sold out, that means there were some students who might not have been able to be served by that. So, we'll continue to work with Pivotal Health on that partnership and making that available. Also, I'll be communicating with families to see if there's any winter or spring physical, like, if it might be worth it to do one again later in the year for those families who might not have been thinking about sports in July, based on what their family's working on. So, our registration is open for all of our fall sports. As of August 7th, and this has changed a little since then, but we have 140 students registered for sports. I think it's up to about 158 right now. It's been a busy day.
Wow.
Football practice starts tomorrow. Just going through and verifying all the physicals, anybody's out there in the world watching right now, if you don't have your physical or your alternate year card in, those are big, hot topics right now, as well as the code of conduct that they can do online. Super helpful to be able to do online, just make sure they're getting in to do that on Skyward. We also will have a new platform for live streaming. Huddle is no longer, through the free service, going to be putting it on our YouTube. However, we're going to have a nice, easy link on the website for everybody. Might even station a few of our teenagers out front at some games to help other people get that app on their phone if they need it, or show them how to do that. But I will also put out a tutorial on how to get there once we get it installed. It is really user-friendly and it helps us share amongst the conference. So wherever we are, you don't have to say, oh, you're playing at Belleville tonight, and you have to know that. You can just go on and see, oh, where's volleyball playing tonight? And you'll be able to see whatever's, you can just pull it up, because it's one of our games. So, that's pretty user-friendly and it's a great service. So, that's athletics, more to come. Oh, with some of the dates in there. So swim also starts tomorrow. We have three people swimming with low dive, so that's great. And next week, we'll have volleyball, cross-country, and soccer all starting on Monday, so that's exciting too. And they're well underway, getting ready to go. So, activities. FFA, once again, great job. Our high school student council met on August 8th to start getting ready for the upcoming school year. It's great to start to see kids working hard in the building. Club information will be available at Open House for people. We really want to start to highlight all of the opportunities, because I think there's a lot more opportunities out there than the community and even some of our students realize. So we want to make sure we're highlighting that. And club advisors are going to be working on a club spotlight during lunch for the first week of school, so students have a lot of opportunities to really start getting involved that way. And we're working on adding a few clubs due to student and staff feedback. So, the journalism club, that actually came up in our listening session, and I'm meeting with a student on Thursday to get that going. She wants to do a newspaper. I might try to get some photojournalists, you know, some, maybe do a little weekly news show and things like that, even things we can share with elementary and our community. Once we get that newspaper going, the libraries have said they will stock it, so you can check it out there. There's a social justice, GSA affinity club, and that has been something staff and students have kind of tried to get going a few times, but just need a little support, and I'm looking forward to giving that to them, to get that going. And then forensics, I've had some staff and students say that's something that has been in the past and would love to see come back. I'm a former forensics coach, so I'm kind of, that's near and dear to my heart as well. So, we'll be working to get those going. I'm really excited about all of the diverse opportunities we have for students coming up and working with them to highlight those for Open House, so people can really see what's going on. Transportation, which also is another hat. I need to wear different, I need hats. I need hats for this meeting, but, um, yeah.
Transportation.
Like a train conductor.
Yeah.
I'll work on it. Okay, so I'm working with GoRightWay on finalizing some rounds and just making sure everything's good there. I'd like to do a transportation survey of the district here coming up at the start of the year, just to make sure everybody's good and see how we can best meet all of the needs. For our after-school trips, we are connecting with other bus companies instead of Badger Coaches as a way to save money, and it maintains an equity among all of our groups for transportation purposes. So, we don't have some groups leaving at a school bus and some leaving on Badger Coach, right? And as we just went through a referendum, we want to be good stories of our money. And so, we have other companies lined up to do those in bus, school buses, to save quite a bit of money, which is great. Our big upcoming events, like I said, we've got practices coming up tomorrow and next Monday. Our Open House, first day of school, homecoming week is the 23rd through the 27th. The big game on the 27th and the dance on the 27th. So, any questions?
Um, boy, I just wondered how many people exhibited at the state fair?
They were, the FFA wasn't exhibiting there. There were a few students who were showing, but they worked in the Discovery Barnyard, which is a really cool area that just showcases different kinds. There were chickens and baby pigs and cows and all sorts of little animals. And then they were talking about ringworm, which is interesting and gross, and some fish, different displays, all sorts of cool things around agriculture. And they kind of split shifts with SOC. They went down the night before, spent, and just got to know another club really well and then worked together on those shifts, so it was great.
And then, so going away from Huddle to a different service?
No, we've always used Huddle.
Okay.
But Huddle used to go to our face, our, I'm sorry, our YouTube account.
Okay.
It's no longer going to stream to YouTube.
Okay, but now it's a subscription or it's not?
It's not.
Okay, good.
This keeps it free.
And the last thing, BSU, does anybody, was anybody going to possibly start that meeting? Black Student Union?
It has not come up, but I think it was part of the whole social ju, like, how are we meeting under that umbrella? And seeing what students would be involved, you know? It may be a large umbrella that breaks into groups just based upon the number of people who participate.
I have a question. For homecoming this year, who's leading it? What's the plan, you know?
Oh, absolutely, it is coming up. Student Council met, they've got the plan. They've got some really good plans for me right now. So, we've got some dress-up days. Costumes seem to go through my head.
Keep the suspense alive.
Yes. I got it. No, no, it's all suspenseful. But, you know, we'll have Gridiron is helping out with the tailgate and stuff on Friday, of course. It'll be great.
Awesome.
Yes.
Is the parade in, I forget, Black Forest?
Yes. It's Black Forest.
What, were you going to say?
I don't know.
Oh, you're smiling.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be.
Oh, okay.
It was last year's, I saw.
But.
Sometimes I miss them.
I think it's up to the student leaders, is what I, oh.
I think they have, they have wanted it to be here.
They wanted to keep it on campus.
Black Forest, I think, is the recommendation.
We should call.
I think all folks should move to Black Forest. Sorry, I brought it up. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just hungry. I'll day long.
Okay.
Run from that.
That was what, your second meeting?
I need to get your feet wet a little bit before we go there.
All good, all good.
Hi Liz, how are you? Good. All right, I'm in the hot seat on this one now. All right, no, this is great. So, thank you for doing this, first of all. Thanks Sarah, she created our template, and then it just, it's great, because we can all communicate together through it, and that's really, it's really something that I think is going to continue to keep our K-12 united in that way. So, super nice. And also, easier for our, easier for our parents and families and community members and even our students, if they want to look at, they're like, oh, yeah, this is the same, the same formats, so thanks. So, a couple things. First of all, just a variety of thank yous in the celebration areas, not just to, just, I mean, in reality, the whole community, students, families, everybody sitting here, everybody in the offices, I mean, just super welcoming and also willing to answer questions when I cannot find it or know which key really goes into that door, which sometimes you are finding within that. But to piggyback off that, Bill and our custodial staff have been phenomenal. To walk through this building when we first came in on July 1, and obviously, they were pulling out things and doing everything, and now to see it start to unfold into what it's going to look like or evolve into what we want for the year, just the amount of work that went into that, we are just grateful for it. Even finding things, just being like, yep, I'll go get that from the shed, I think we got one of those. I'm like, perfect, that sounds great. And so just that ease and that communication piece is just, again, our custodial staff are just number one, and we cannot do anything without them, so really, really grateful and thankful for that. I know Bev's not here right now, but Bev has a lot of chats from me, so thank goodness she's okay with that. So just, again, random silly questions, but just things that really have helped me, as well as Ms. Untell, behind us here, has worked with us, especially with special education, but also just being willing to go outside the box with the way we were hiring from the lens of looking at how we can utilize each of these people that we hired. And so, I'm really doing the best for our students. And so that was super exciting and a huge celebration for us as well. And I know it's not on here, because obviously, things shift as we, as we continue to make these, but we did have a great meeting with our students for homecoming and just getting a chance to see them in action and hearing what they had to say and being a part of it was truly a way, a great way to start just getting to know students here in our building. So, super thankful for all those and just some fun celebrations for us from the lens of what we're looking forward to here coming up in a few weeks. So, a couple other pieces, and I'll kind of go through this piece, was our student achievement area. The master schedule is done. So, this is, this is, yes, it's done. So right now, as of right now, all of our freshmen and our sophomores are into Scavard, and our juniors and seniors are going in tomorrow, and our middle schools are all set, they just have to, it just has to get put in. So then it will open up. We tried to do the best, it was really great. Thank goodness for our teachers that were willing to give me their cell phone numbers, so I could ask them questions just for knowledge of, okay, hey, how many sections of this were run last year? What did you have the year? And did this, does this work better being back-to-back? Would you like a space between? Just really good feedback, especially just ask, being willing, and they didn't know me, so I'm calling them up on a phone, and now, but now I'm getting a chance to meet them. So really great stuff from that end, and they really helped implement what we could do in that master schedule for the best for our students. And that's what I'm looking forward to once it's all in there. But it is done, so we're ready. So, super excited about that. Then what I'll kind of talk about is some of the committee pieces, very similar to Sarah's committees from the lens of our SLT, and then our PBIS, which, all right, it's always been in a K-5 area. It is in our student handbook in 612, just letting you know. So we are going to implement it in a way to be able to basically align it to a high school, a 612 building, and use then, use the same language, so that as they're coming through K-5 and up to 612, they're going to hear those same things. Where the expectations may look a little bit different in a biology classroom compared to a kindergarten classroom, but the language will be the same. So the hope will be is as that continues to go, we're going to see students feeling, and feeling like, hey, we're a part of this, we understand it, and hopefully, less of things that could cause anxiety and things like that for our students. So that's a, that's a huge goal for us from that. Great thing, and I know there are two other people where I've gotten the chance to have Tom. Tom Schmidt, who I know is just phenomenal in the PBIS area as well, because he has a lot of expertise in it. And so he is really kind of taking that and running with some of that to try to align it to our 612 area, and looking at what K-5 has and then looking at what was already implemented here, or what was on the paper in the student handbook at Rice. So, kind of going from that lens. We are also looking at that climate and culture as well, that's going to look a little different from where elementary, K-5, has a group of teachers that, you know, have, you know, already have chosen. We have not chosen any of these just yet. What we're doing that is one of our first staff days, and then we are going to decide how, how many people want to be on it. I want people to feel that they, they want to be a part of the committee, because I think if you're a part of it, it makes it so much more empowering and it makes it more useful. And therefore then, we can move mountains that way. And so that's, that's where we're doing that in those first three days of our staff meeting, as we are kind of putting that together, explaining them, and then allowing people to, you know, center them for, within our building, which hopefully will be really good from there. Side note of that, our SLT, we got to meet today. So, again, wasn't part of the original one, but we did get a chance to meet today. Really got some great feedback from our teachers on that team and hearing what great work has already been done, and now we get to build on it. So, just, and hearing the energy in the room when they're talking about these different strategies that have been done from our reading lens and then moving the needle in areas, but also recognizing we have some other areas to move the needle in. And they, and they all did too, and we're like, yep, we need work on that, how can we do that? So that is going to be what we're going to be focusing on. I know I won't steal Mr. Green's thunder right now, I know he's going to talk a little bit about that, but we're going to be doing something on next Monday, matter of fact, in a full district. And so we're looking forward to getting a chance to do that. Communication and the community involvement pieces, we do, I have a lovely newsletter that is going out this week with the attachment of that master schedule for our staff, so that is super exciting. But also just for some, for our parents and for our students, just a little bit more about me, so that hopefully, as they're coming through Open House or just stopping in in the summer, they feel that they could just come in and say hello and just, you know, start a conversation where we can do some things and get some relationships building, so I can get to know some of our students. So, looking forward to that for sure. And as for our budget, thank goodness, I know Derek is sitting up there, but thank goodness he has helped me through it, because, yep, the budget is always fun, we have a middle school and a high school, because you have two separate budgets, but you're really together, and which is, which is terrific. But then creating a spreadsheet, which allows me to see everything separate, and therefore each time something goes, I know exactly where we sit, which will help us. And also allows us to be smart on how we're going to be working through that and really looking at our teachers, looking at our teachers, what they are looking for for our students to be successful, and being able to use that money to be able to do those types of things. Rachel has also been a huge part of that too, because as I continue to center requisitions, it's great that you just have to remember to drop down to 24, 25, and not be in 23, 24, because I get denied no matter what. So, yes, so that was, those are all learning curves. Another piece of it is we do have our CTE and our Cal Perkins money, which our, we have a group of people going, starting on tomorrow, to our, to, and I won't steal your thunder, I'm sorry Dale, but it's super exciting, they're going to get a chance to talk about how they want to spend that money to help our students continue in those areas, and honestly, how to help our whole building, 612, implement some things through some times that they're going to use some of their, their expertise in those areas. So really some great stuff. We have, obviously, the schedule for our August coming in, just looking forward to that open house and getting the staff back in here and meeting our new teachers here coming up, so some fun stuff. Yeah, sorry I talked fast, but I gave you a last information, but what questions can I answer?
It's just good to hear about PBIS going into high school and your thoughts on that, so thank you.
Thanks.
Can a staff member be on all three committees if they really wanted to?
If they really, really want to. They are more than welcome to. I will always make sure I lay out what that would entail, so that they don't, I don't want them to feel overwhelmed with it. I want them to really use their energy where, it doesn't mean that they can't have, like, where we can't have subgroups if there's something really big going on, but it does, I don't have a problem with it, but I think I just want to make sure they understand what the commitment is before they do that.
Yes.
Yes.
Great question. So they intend those maybe pooled to, to one of your favorites?
To one of your favorite areas, yeah. And it gives us that a really good cross-section of our staff in the building, so 612 having that ownership and empowering us to really build our community here. Anything else? Awesome. All right, okay, well, thank you, thank you for it, thank you.
You guys can fight over it.
I'm sorry.
You gotta follow that.
Yeah, you gotta follow that.
I know.
There's a lot of energy around here. For my report, I'll start with just career human rotation, trying to keep that in front of you, on everyone, so we just know where we're at with that. I'll do that from time to time, but really, just getting ready for the school year. Liz mentioned two big days coming up tomorrow and Wednesday. I'm spending two days with Chris Hopper, Chris Ha, Kim Hauser, and Heather Schomburg in the Dells at the Career Renewables Summit. So we'll be working on some of the Perkins grant, we'll make some decisions there, but looking forward to that conversation and what we're going to be back to staff, so that'll be good. Educator effectiveness, I think we're all set. We had a great training on July 30th, the administrative team met, everyone certified, so we're all set on that front. And just highlighting, next Monday's a big day for us, we have our district SLT, our district SIP meeting. We do have a couple of seasoned folks coming in to help us out with that, but we'll spend the day together as a complete K12 staff. The first part of the day will be a joint effort, and then the second part of the day we'll spend the two groups, we'll have an opportunity to split up and then come back, kind of finalize the thing. So that's always a great way to kick off a school year. New teacher in service already next week, so that's always, honestly, it's, you know, part of, one of my favorite things that I get to do is that new teacher in service. So it'll take two days or three staff, onboard them with our district and overall adult. So it's just a really important introduction for them to us. Don't take that lightly. A lot of times I don't mention this, but we received the Pure Mentoring Grant again this year, I think it's the fifth year in a row, that I worked with Jeremy down at Bigfoot Union High School, just the two school districts. It's a $25,000 grant, and we split it both ways. The last two years, weird numbers, I don't know how they ended up with $24,464, but I think there's a pool of money within the state that distributed. But we use that to train our mentors, gives us some resource for our new teachers, and it's really been helpful the last number of years, so appreciate that. And then just put a list of our district-wide testing schedule for the year, so we'll draft form, but it's pretty close, and I gave you an update there, Act 20 update. Ames Web Plus was selected as the statewide literacy screener. On the schedule, you'll see I have listed Ames Web Plus plus SIPs monic screener. We probably won't end up doing SIPs. SIPs was a K2 screener, the Ames Web will be K3, so, but I just kept it on there because I want to make sure that, talking with Sarah, and then we want to get our interventionists involved. Plus, we do not know exactly what parts of Ames Web district is going to require of us, so depending on the information that we need, we'll just wait and see. Any questions for me?
I also love your report structure.
Somebody's got to be a rebel.
Yes. It's great to see the student services and their curve of the rotation. I think that's such a great idea and change.
That was a good addition, so I appreciate that. Thanks everyone.
Thanks Dale.
Oh, yes. I'm hoping it's right. I'll go next if you want. I'll be perfect, because I have a touch of a harder topic today, so quite the exciting back to some. But it is a really important topic, and so I want to spend some time talking about that, and that is seclusion and restraint. So it is something that I think across all school districts, we need to continue to keep in mind, and the reason we continue to keep that in mind is because our goal is zero. So anytime we are not hitting that goal, we have an area that we need to continue to look towards improving for the safety of our students, our staff, and just the community in general. So as we're thinking about that and looking at the numbers, I can definitely celebrate the decrease that we've had from 2022 to 2023 to the last school year, but show that eight instances is too many. When we're thinking about this, DPI is really using it kind of as a reset here, they've really been only monitoring that data and suggesting improvements for the last four years, and COVID really threw a wrench in that because kids were virtual for a lot of that time. So they don't really count that data as the most accessible or helpful data to really review. When we're thinking about that, what we really are going to continue to be responsible for is looking at those individual instances, and then figuring out how we continue to shift plans and better train our staff. For our district, what that looks like is an emphasis on professional development. There's a lot of work out there now on trauma-based approaches, responsive classrooms. PBIS things will definitely help because we're proactively teaching students the necessary behaviors, improving our IP's, and then also really thinking about the programming and structures we put into a school district for our students, whether they have an IP or not, and then how we're teaching them how to regulate their bodies. From a budgetary standpoint, that does look like professional development, like I said, which a celebration we have is tomorrow, we have nine violent crisis intervention, and I have 18 staff members signed up, and that is the highest number we've had in many years, especially because we have classroom teachers who are coming, and even we have one of our food service people coming, because these escalations do not just start in a special education classroom, though we know that our students with disabilities tend to have higher rates of seclusion and restraint, these things often start in a general education classroom, in a cafeteria where there's a conflict, out on a playground, it starts everywhere. So the more adults we train and support in good instructional practices, the better off we will. And I think that can, is shown in some of our data as we've shifted programming, improved our interventions, looked at our staffing years and years ago, I'm sure Dale would be the best person to speak to this, how many special education teachers were in the elementary school? I think at one point it was one split between Black Earth and Mesa. Yep. So the district has done a great job of responding to those needs in terms of changing staffing, programming, and services. It's something that we will just always strive to improve. As we keep going on that, I'm going to go ahead and lighten the mood a little bit, because part of that in terms of responding to the needs of students is looking at special education caseloads. So personally, I love Jigsaw Puzzles, and from January to September, I don't need to do any of them, because I have it all within my caseload documents. And I say that lightly because there are so many factors that go into planning caseloads. Today, four of my special education teachers reached out, we just continued thoughts about it, because when you start, you say to those classroom teachers and special ed teachers and all of our related service staff, that we have to start with student need in mind. I also tease my special education staff members because they have large hearts and they all just want to keep them all. And that doesn't necessarily mean we're providing the best structures for our students if we're not looking at where their general education start in the spot is, because that is our priority. And we plan grade levels, classrooms, EAs. Relationships are important, but we also have to trust our team, that all of us are here to do great work for kids, and so we have to trust that we can do the handoff, handoff, and let them really support kids at the next level. We also work on shifting that because we don't want to create students that are adult-dependent. And if you stay with the same group for too long, those kids think that they need you in order to be successful, which is not the case, we're building their success all along the way. So caseloads are a big thing, IP programming, relationships. Another thing that has shifted over the course of years, and I'll be honest, each director does it a little bit differently, and I've done it differently than Matt, and I say that as somebody who went with Matt for many years. When I say something called a weighted analysis, DPI has really suggested that we don't look at a caseload number, like I shouldn't walk in and say, oh, I have 15 kids on my caseload, because 15 students that each have 20 to 30 minutes of service a day is very different than 15 students that have 100 minutes of service. So when you're looking at a weighted analysis, you're looking at kids who are more independent and successful in general education setting than that next layer of students that need a little bit of additional support. And then when you really look at kids that need something like augmented communication devices, or a one-on-one assistant that you have to work communication, or those significant behavior issues that go back to that seclusion and restraint training, or you're really bringing a different level of social emotional support, those 15 kids look very different. This year, it's looking like our caseloads will range from seven to 15, but we go through it as a team and kind of look and see and make sure that that's balanced for staff. Because one of the things I think is also a reality is, going back to the data with seclusion and restraint, if one teacher is too heavily loaded with our students who are dysregulated, it is hard to meet those needs successfully. And so, again, trusting each other, building the capacity across the board, including general education, those are huge things that will help us continue to find great systems and supports for our kids with disabilities. Again, so much goes into it, I appreciate my team, I continue to try to pay them for their time, because they have helped incredibly, especially with, again, hiring. We shifted things this year because special education teachers and related service providers are very hard to find, and so we've done some creative problem solving to fill the gaps. Very excited about having a full EA staffing, because that was a huge shift, that was really tricky last year. Last but not least, again, I will kind of go more positive, I'm excited about working with the team, focusing on the two PLC questions, and then of course, the really exciting part is all my DPI monitoring that I get to do. We'll be looking at all of our paperwork and checking our procedures, and I'm happy for the policy as well. That was a lot of information, what questions can I answer?
So did you say you're fully staffing?
We are. Woo-hoo, so excited. And then each time I say it, I feel like I need to go knuckle up. Yep, it is very exciting.
I have a question about, so obviously it would be easy if you're quantifying a caseload and saying, oh, the norm or the average is this, and so then you can identify a minimum and a maximum kind of thing. So when it's weighted, how, how do you, you know, when is the threshold of saying we need to add a staff because our weight is, you know, like how, how do then categorize a weight to know when it's over the threshold?
Absolutely, that's a great question. What I start by doing right now is I look at the balance between the teachers, and so if everybody has a weighted caseload of, say, 14, then I can see that we're able to meet those student needs. Where, what it, again, really comes down to is if I, if we can't meet students. So that's where that threshold piece gets into play, and I'd say, you know, weighted caseload, the current method that I'm using, if we were hitting 20 across the board, it would be a drop. Right now, because we can be so creative about who's providing which instructional minutes and responding to some needs in, again, creative ways, my staff members, I don't want to speak for them, but seem to be feeling pretty positive about the schedules and the services that they're planning. Caseloads always look heavier, for the most part, as we get to high school, and that's just because we anticipate those kids are more independent and can thrive and hopefully move towards a 504 without those strong services. That's always our goal, is bringing them back to general education. And then, so does that, it's a tricky, there's no perfect answer?
No, it's you, and you've got it handled, and, you know, it's just, yeah, how do you, yeah.
The changing needs of students, that's the other factor that I think is really true.
And flows and, yeah.
For sure, and we saw that a ton last year. That was a huge change.
So you need your own, like, wizardry hat.
It's, again, it's my Jigsaw puzzle, which I, and it's not just mine, every team member has added access and input to that, because they have to feel successful and see the program options for them as well.
But the mere fact that you're saying we're not in that threshold of, you know, 20 across the board is enough to, yeah.
Not just you, but, yeah, sure, there are going to be surprises. Any other questions?
I do have a few.
Of course.
But I want to start it with saying how proud I am and our whole community is of our special education here at Wisconsin Heights, and I think every board member in all of our conversations are always about how impressed we are and how almost protective we are of the staff, because we know how hard they all work. But, so I know that this is a more retroactive look, this is going back a few years now, right, and so changes have been made to address this. Was this something that the district was sort of expecting to receive a notice about because of the numbers, or was it a sort of surprise maybe that monitoring was coming?
It was a little bit of a surprise, they have three levels of monitoring, it's not a total surprise, we have looked at our numbers and, and worked to improve them over the last couple of years. And we have worked with DPI within the last four years with those numbers, so not a total surprise. I would say what was different from artist or compared to others, more often you see that discrepancy at elementary level, which in this case it was our middle school.
Okay. And then this is one I would like your expertise on, so you say that we are at a good caseload weighted average level now, but we still see this unfortunate level of seclusion and restraint that brings us into monitoring. How do, how do those happen at the same time?
That's a great question, because I can tell you that as we plan for this upcoming school year, we've continued to shift services. To continue to shift and decrease those numbers, which can usually look like increasing special education services throughout the day, again, better training people, but you can also look at that larger picture of programming and what programming is available in our district and what's in our district. So those are things that also are considered at times, because we want to make sure we are doing what is best for kids. And sometimes if we aren't able to serve that, here our goal is obviously to serve them here in their home district, but we look at our outside resources and continue to bring them in or find ways to use those.
I'll show my ignorance again, but those number that are, you know, cited as, are those discrete individuals, or are there people that are secluded and restrained repeatedly, and it's like a smaller cohort within that?
So actually, that's part of our reporting, so that is a, in general, we are looking at that seclusion data, while we had, for example, seven instances of restraints, the total number of students that were involved in those were three students.
Okay.
I just want to say again how impressive the work you do is, and I appreciate you, you know, coming here and answering the questions for us, because I think we're all trying to understand how we can best support you, because you do such a great job. Yes.
And it's a, and I just, it's a heavy topic, and I think that we need to continue to keep the needs of our students with disabilities, and a lot of our different neurodivergent learners that are really coming into the district at the forefront of our conversation, because there are definitely ways we can continue to support them.
But certainly would be a different historical data, in the pre-COVID era, I mean, we've made massive strides, so it's something to celebrate, even though I'm sure it's constant, you know, someone turmoil and, and struggle or whatever, but something to celebrate too, to say we were at 60 at one point and now we're in a single digit is certainly something.
And this could be it. This could be it. Other questions?
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks. Thanks for letting me jump in so we can end on finances.
Hi, Derek.
So now to a much more fun and uplifting topic. So really, July in the terms of the 24, 25 fiscal year is a very mundane and slow time of year, not for the 23, 24 year, as we're going through our audit on our entire side of fiscal year books right now. We had the auditors in on Thursday and Friday last week. They, if I told you they asked your own questions, I'd be alive. They ask questions, that's their job. The audit went well, I, we didn't receive any, like, major findings or questions or anything, we were able to kind of answer their questions. There's some ones we weren't expecting, but that comes up in the course of an audit, no, nothing major really concerning or anything like that. One thing they did kind of bring up that was helpful is they brought up our solar project and kind of gave me some contacts to reach out to, to kind of start the process of planning the tax credits that are related to that. So I wanted to reach out to our vendor and say, this was included as part of the bid, are you doing anything as a part of this? My assumption is it'll kind of be on the district. So I wanted to kind of use the auditor's resources that they've seen and kind of reach out to some of our colleagues in the area who have done similar projects like Oregon, Wanaquie, Roma, all our colleagues that I know pretty well can, can help kind of use resources that they found helpful in their process. So I want to kind of update the board on that, so I'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks to kind of get those balls rolling, so we don't miss any deadlines and can file our 24 taxes. Other than that, we're kind of ramping up for school to come back, help support new administrators on what it means to, what a budget means, what there is not to, and kind of ease the fear or pain of, I'm not that scary to talk to. And we want to kind of make sure we're doing the best things with our money, and so we can enhance the kids' environment as best we can, and the school environment for staff, students, and community. So are there any questions the board has for me, and what's kind of a higher level report? I know it's kind of a higher level report this month, but sometimes that's good.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
I'll bring it back, the enthusiasm. Well, I, first and foremost, I want to thank our incredible staff. I mean, you saw all of the things that they've been working hard on in just a matter of a couple of weeks, to be honest. And they don't need any direction. They are just like, I'm in here rolling up my sleeves, doing a lot of really great things and with smiles on their faces and having a lot of fun. So thank you to all them and thank you to you all for your support too. I think our retreat that we had last week really solidified that team aspect that we're, that collaboration that we're hoping to achieve here and really work together to create the culture that we want. So thank you. I'm not going to go, I mean, I've been involved with a lot of the things they've already talked about. I will not continue to talk about those. A couple of things that I've been working more closely on is school safety. So a couple of weeks ago, we brought our entire team to the school safety summit in Fording County. And also I went to the legal conference and we brought our team together on Friday and put a lot of things in place. And so I have been diving deep into redoing our crisis manual for the district, which is a pretty big feat and it needs to be approved at the next board meeting. So I've had the opportunity to, I've been met with Mount Horne School District, Oregon, and Forest today. And what they keep on telling me is, Michelle, it took us seven years to get to where we're at and you want to do it in seven days. And I'm like, yes, we do. So we, we've been putting that together and my goal is to have that complete by the end of this week, have some of our team give it a look and then get it off to you. So, and we are going to be going with the standard response protocol, which all of, for the most part, the entire country, I think, is going to be using that. But Dane County in particular, we've been encouraged by our law enforcement to actually use that new program. And so that's what we're going to be using. And then our hopes is that you approve it at the next board meeting and then we actually have the training for our staff that very next day. So we have everything aligned with that. No pressure. So, but it's, it'll, it's a great program. And I think one of the other key parts, so I've also started writing the grant for the digital mapping system for our school district. A lot of districts have done that. And so just getting in the process of doing that. So then our whole building will be digital. And then ultimately, when any police officer or law enforcement comes to your building, they have it on their phones, they can, they have access to where they need to be. So another key safety thing. I also met with one organization today just to start looking at safety from a building standpoint, so entrances, our doors, whether they're locked, not locked, all of those things. So that's going to be a process just to really find out what we have in place in our school and are currently in our district and then having some conversations about what we want to do to remedy that, to keep our kids safe. So, so that's been a lot of my time. And then also just looking at student handbooks. I know Sarah and Liz have done it, take, looking at the handbook from their lens and what they bring to the table from their other districts. And then once I get those, I'm going to be meeting with our legal counsel because we've never really had our student handbooks or it's been a long time since we've had our handbooks actually given to legal counsel to actually look to make sure that we're crossing all our Ts, Ds, and RIs. So we'll be doing that and those will be coming to you as well at the next board meeting. So hoping to get those to soon. Because there's a lot of things that had to be changed. We had to incorporate some timeline things in them, but also a lot of just things that actually, that we all, we've worked with with board policies that we have that don't, aren't in our handbooks right now that we really, they need to be in there. So you'll see quite a few revisions that we had to make. So, the other, the fun thing is that I get to continue to meet with a lot of community members and that's been a lot of fun, probably about three a week. And they come in and it's a great conversation and connection. And we've even had some of them agree to come work for us, like in helping the office. So that's been great. So we'll take it when we can. And I think, I think for the most part, I will say this, students, we had the students in here for homecoming planning. And that was actually just really refreshing because, you know, I was up, I was able to be a part of it, Liz was there, Mel, I mean, all the students. And it was just really neat to see all of levels coming together to plan something for the community and the school. And, you know, that's, that's been, I think, all of our wish for that to happen. So it'll be a pretty, pretty cool thing. Any questions for me? On the cusp of the closing ceremonies, as you referenced, our workshop, the Olympic team, it's like the dream team vibes are alive here. So just thanks to everybody for your enthusiasm, energy work because, yeah, you can feel the excitement building and I'm sure even more when the kids are present in the work because that's why we're all here. It's just, yeah, the anticipation of the new year is upon us and it's exciting. So, yeah, thanks again to everybody. A lot of great info and we really do appreciate you sharing all that. So we'll move on and thankfully no further district business in our committee discussion tonight. So we'll move on to 6.1. Do I have a motion to approve the WHHS band choir drama trip for the spring of 2025? And I just want to make note that we will be looking at updating our policy for our field trips and off-site trips. Just kind of looking at what are the outlines and procedures for the advisors in terms of reporting to us and to timeline for that and whatnot. So really anticipate this is just a brief overview and to get the ball rolling for their planning sake. And then we'll figure out on a kind of timeline basis when they'll come back and report some of the details and logistics of the trip. So if anybody has any other questions, they can, they can do that. But it sounds like a really fantastic opportunity. So thanks again to Nick Lane for organizing that. Any questions? Okay, hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
You guys, I, oh.
I think it's on. Nick Lane is on.
Oh.
Look, look, I'm nearing my glide. I've been working on it hard. I've been looking forward to talking to you guys, man. How's everything going? Let's just, you know, breathe here. No, I'm just kidding. Thanks for approving that. I think that's what just happened. It was great and we'll bring back all kinds of information, qualitative data on how everything goes so that we can help you develop some of those policies and procedures that you were just talking about.
Even better, wow. Thanks so much, we appreciate that. How's the car coming along?
You know what? I actually really appreciate that question. Look, I rebuilt the entire motor myself from the bottom up. I feel really good about that.
Ooh, I say.
But I haven't been sleeping.
Well, thanks again for, for coming and sharing that. We really do appreciate all the work that goes into that and look forward to everything you're going to share in the future.
And I look forward to seeing all of you a lot, I, when we get started.
Woo-hoo, that was good. Thanks, Mr. Lane.
Yes, thank you.
Take it easy.
We got the speaker fixed in here.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to waive two readings of the student handbooks for the 2024 and 2025 school year? And I just want to make a note on this too, that it pretty much was for the sake of time and to give credit again to Sarah and Liz and everybody else involved for tackling this head on. Because it's kind of one of those things that, you know, you don't just want to do it for the sake of doing it and rush and cram. And so this has kind of given them, I would say, a lot of time, but a little bit more to at least dive in and do good work on it. And so anticipate the handbooks being sent prior to the meeting, at least. So I'm not putting a date stamp on it, but it will be prior to the meeting so people can get a refresher and a read-through prior to the meeting, but be prepared to vote on that then. So any questions? Thanks again for, for the work on that. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And no action. Is Nick, Kelly, do you have anything else to share?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for all the information on that. All right, moving on to personnel. This is an exciting bunch of hires. So I will ask for a motion to combine 8.1 through 8.11. Awesome. Welcome to everybody, really exciting here. We have a full team and that we're not going into the down and then or anything. So any questions on any of those?
With all the food service.
We found.
Thank you to the community for approving our referendum so we can up the pay and get people in.
Yep, makes a big difference. All right, hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And our future meeting dates are listed on there. One more meeting for the school year. Exciting, yeah. Any questions on those? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yeah.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Did I say it clear?
I've come down those days now.